Hello, everybody. Um, I'd like to call the meeting to order. The time is 7:44 PM. And if everybody could stand for the touch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of this law of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is comments from the public. We have comments from the public. Hearing none. Um, we will have, we have a revision to the agenda tonight to add, um, 2.4, 2.5, and 2.6 to the executive session, uh, which we will do after the meeting. So can I have a motion to adopt the revisions?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? And, oh, we also, sorry, we also need to add. No, I'm sorry, we did that already, 2.4, 2.5. So now, uh, if I could please have a motion to adopt the consent agenda for 6.1 personnel, 7.1 special services, 8.1 business. Um, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? And then I, looks like we're going on to Dr. Lamia and, right, and Kelly for the budget.
Yes, we are. All right. Kelly's looking at me like, is it me or you? Poor Kelly, we had our, our budget, our budget meeting this morning at the high school principal's coffee, and at one point I was like, Kelly? You wanted to add?
I'll say something.
I got a little bit on a roll, I'm sorry.
I started to say something, I say, Jen, you want to translate this in English for our money?
I, I give it its fair amount. All right, so here we are at April 22nd, our night of, uh, proposed soul for budget adoption. Uh, May 6th, we'll be budget hearing five, that's a review of the proposed budget, a final review. May 20th, a budget vote at H.C. Crittenon Middle School. Um, we have our budget proposed for 2526 at 107,327,289. That's a 3.73% budget to budget increase. Uh, we say this all the time, we want to make sure that not only we cover all of our federally mandated, um, issues regarding schools, all, uh, programs, but our athletic programs remain, our extracurricular programs remain, and that we have options like we have had in the past to create programs that we know are going to equip our kids for the futures that they're going to face. For example, in the last few years, we started an entrepreneurship program called Startup at the high school, preparing our kids who are interested in all of the facets of business and starting up companies and what that entails. What an incredible experience for kids to have to go out into the world with. And our budgets continue programs like that and the development of programs, uh, whether it's in robotics or anything else that we've been doing over the past couple of years, um, to really prepare our kids for what we think the future holds for them, which we don't know, but we're, we're keeping up pretty, I would say. Um, 78, 72.8% of our budget goes to program, 15.1% to capital, and 12.1% to administrative. Um, we have salaries and benefits at 79.4%, that's very typical. Um, I encourage anyone who thinks that I'm flying through this like crazy to look at our past budget hearings, because we go into all of these things in great detail, so this is a summary. Uh, you know that we have contractual services of 13.5%, debt service at 2.2%. That's a debt that we took out, uh, close to 30 years ago to do expansions on our schools when we were growing, and that will have its final payment next year. Supplies and equipment at 2.5%, maintenance projects at 1.7, and vehicles at 0.7. Um, we know we're, we're buying new buses and we're getting ready for the electrification of our bus fleet as well. Uh, we have real property taxes, how do we pay for this? What is the revenue? Real property taxes, um, comprise 88% of our budget, which, um, if you go and look around at other towns and other budgets, you will see that that number varies depending upon where you live. There are some school districts that receive a lot more aid than Byram Hills does. We, our taxes are comprised of 88% of our real property taxes are comprised of our budget. Um, we also have state aid at 4%. Payment in lieu of taxes to businesses, uh, IBM and Engel Berman, who set up a payment in lieu of taxes with the district and agreement for X number of years to pay a certain number of taxes. And that accounts for 2% of our budget. Our fund balance appropriation, that is a legal thing, that we're allowed to take 4% of our fund balance and carry that over, and other revenue of 2%, uh, that's things like sales tax. All right, so if you take a look at the total revenues, we have our real property taxes, um, the increase, the projected from 2425 to 2526, uh, the increase variance is 2.43%. Our payment in lieu of taxes, we do see a declination in those pilots over years, and that's going to result in a negative 2.43% reduction, I'm sorry, not a negative. Other revenue, uh, 5.29% anticipated increase. State aid, 1.33% increase, and our fund balance, 44.51% increase. Uh, the total amounting to 3.8 million dollars, or 3.73%. Um, so how does that affect your taxes on the $1,000 of assessed value? Remember, we have four, four different parts of towns that contribute to our little school district. North Castle comprises 81% of our homes. Um, North Castle is anticipated to see a 20 cent, um, 20, a 0.2% decrease in taxes, or a dollar fifty-eight per $1,000 of assessed value as a decrease. Newcastle is projected at $12.55 increase per $1,000 of assessed value. Bedford, increase of $20.84 for $1,000 of assessed value. And Mount Pleasant, an increase of $169.56 per, um, $1,000 of assessed value. And I encourage anyone who has a question about this to contact us if after looking at the budget presentations, you don't understand how that happens. But our taxes are based on assessed values of homes in each of these four areas. And when an assessed value goes up, they take the lion's share of the tax base. Um, and, and that will fluctuate from town to town, so Kelly, I'll show you right here. If you take a look at something like, uh, Mount Pleasant, if you look at this year, the increase of 14.98%. Mount Pleasant, because of the assessed value of homes at the time, last year had a decrease of 4.37, and the year before, a decrease of 3.78. You'll see that Bedford in 2223 had a decrease of 8.39, and last year, a decrease of, of 2.07. But this year has an increase of 13.83, and that is dependent upon the assessed values of homes in those areas in any given year, and it's not something that the district controls. Even if you take a look at 2020, 21, we had a 0% budget to budget increase. Even with a 0% budget to budget increase, um, Mount Pleasant had a 3.6% increase in their school taxes. So this is all about how the shift in, in, uh, tax burden falls. And we're happy to explain that in detail. So, 2526, 2.43% tax levy increase. We are not going above the tax levy, we are staying at 2.43%. That's a 3.73% budget to budget increase. You may say, if you're only increasing the tax levy by 2.43, how are you accounting for a budget to budget increase of 3.73? Remember that we have our, um, 4% that we are carrying over in our fund balance. We have reserves, should we need them, that we are, um, looking at to balance that budget. Our total budget is 107,327,289. Kelly, I know it's the very last time, but if you can go back to that, that last space between the 289 dollars drives me insane. Is there, should there be a space there?
To the comma.
I don't know, every time I read it, it's like the comma's always shifted and something looks wrong. Is it?
The space.
A comma.
When the space happens.
It looks like the two is on top of the comma. The spacing is on.
Space should be to the, the comma should be the seventh.
Yeah.
The space should be to the right of the comma.
I'm pulling the savings.
Only seen 20 presentations.
I've seen a hundred, every time I see it, I, whatever, I just love it.
I'll change it, I'll change it. It's been like that for six years.
Yeah, seven years. All right, and then once again, um, May 6th, the budget hearing five, and May 20th, the budget vote at H.C. Crittenon Middle School. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Right, with baby saying, and dog sitting. Yes, PTSA and dog sitting, and thank you to the parents who've come out to the principal's coffees to learn about the budget as well.
Great. Thank you so much for that review, are we, is that, are we finished with that?
Yeah.
Finished with the review, okay, true, okay. So can I, I'd like to call for a motion to adopt the proposed 2025 to 26 budget and property tax report card.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Um, the next item is unfinished business. Let's see, none. We can move on and turn it over to Tim and Christina Wilson for presentation regarding changes to the school counseling and guidance plan. Christina, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, thank you for always having me and all the, all your supportive guidance always, so, pleasure to be here.
Right, so we'll jump right in, Christina has a lot to present, so I want to give you plenty of time to ask questions. We've also been in a process that Christina is going to show with reviewing our high school profile, something that I think the format has been the same since, I can remember, I think it's been the same.
The format has been the same since forever.
Forever.
Um, we're grateful to, um, some, a couple of parents in the community who really took a look at it and worked with us on it and are continuing to work with us on it, and.
It needed a facelift.
That's what we, and that's what we love about this community is the partnerships, right?
Absolutely.
Makes everything better.
Right, so we will take a look at that, this is a draft, it's still a draft form, and we are now at the stage of getting lots of input. Christina will talk more about that process in just a moment, but we're happy to have her here to talk about the college process. She facilitates, um, three meetings a year with this school counseling advisory committee.
Is this working? Is, is there?
Let's see. Let's make sure it's.
Maybe it's just the arrows, or is it?
Yeah, it's the arrows, but maybe, um.
It's a little sticky.
Oh, it is on.
Maybe I'm just too far away.
Yeah, yeah. So I will.
You can, I think you know, you know, I'll, I'll give you the look when we, we need to. So I, I do present on this every year, and I think it's important to, to remember that we do have a guidance plan in place since 2019, since the regulations stated that we needed to have a guidance plan. And that's really to make sure that our students have access to counseling services, and that our services that we're providing students are responsive to their needs. And, um, that is really what the guidance plan, you know, it's very lengthy, um, and it goes into how we do that. We update it every year, because of course things change, and we always publish that in July of each year. It's on the guidance web, uh, website, so feel free to always take a look at that. Um, but, and as a part of the guidance plan, we were tasked with coming up with an advisory committee, and that advisory committee needed to have constituents from, um, from the community. So we have parents, we have students, we have administrators, we have teachers, we have school counselors, and of course, we have board members. Many of you have sat on that committee and, uh, uh, ooh, is that right? Sounds like rain. Oh, it sounds like rain. Uh, Lori, Lara, and, um, Petri are on this year and have, uh, really helped us, I think, do some really great work.
It's been great to have the student voice in, on this committee as well. I know parents, board members, you know, really appreciate hearing from the kids' talk.
The kids really add another element.
That's great.
A great perspective to it. And we'll continue on with this, obviously, we meet three times throughout the school year. Um, and then I've kind of outlined what our agenda has been each year, and we come, we try to come up with an agenda that is, uh, responsive, relevant to what's going on. Um, you know, certainly during the COVID years and coming out of the COVID years, we had to really think about what did our students need? What do our students need from us? How are we, uh, providing services? How are we supporting them? And then from there, we've been able to go on and kind of tackle what I would say, um, you know, bigger items or items that are going to help us really, uh, look to the future. And the timeliness of the portrait of a graduate, New York State Portrait of a Graduate coming out, and knowing that we have a lot of work to do to make sure that our students, um, have the mindsets and the skills and the competencies, and that we know how to find that information, and that we know how to, we can see where our current curriculum and where our current experiences that our students do partake in are already aligned with many of the things that New York State is going to be asking of our students. And we spent the year looking at that. We also took a look at, um, you know, what are our opportunities? Where do we need to maybe, um, you know, think a little bit more strategically around students gaining experiences, um, that they're going to need to have to, uh, you know, to, you know, meet, meet the requirements of a portrait of a graduate. And I think this is particular help, particularly helpful with Chris Walsh as he, uh, looks to work with the faculty over the course of the next year or two and look to see, um, you know, how to have these conversations about what are we currently doing? Um, where is there alignment between what we're going to be asked to do and what we currently do? And then where can we also, um, find opportunities to, to provide more programs?
The board will recall, I've presented a few times on the Portrait of a Graduate. We don't know a lot of information yet. We have a timeline, but the details haven't come out yet. So I'll keep you posted as we get more information, but we're starting to consider where we need to be moving as a district.
So next, so next is jumping into the, a draft of the school profile, and I think this is a good place to kind of, um, throw out the idea of, um, artificial intelligence and its role in college admissions, and how there is not a lot of information forthcoming from colleges right now about how they are using AI in college admissions. I, uh, we've asked colleges all the time, and we always get a very nice response, which is, we absolutely review everything and every decision is being made by a human reader. And, and this is, they're very, you know, it's, it's interesting that they all say the exact same thing. And so when you are met with that so many times, um, you're reminded also, we're Byram Hills, and we're also not going to wait until something is indeed in place to start planning for it. And I think the school profile is one of the areas where we felt that we could do a better job of making sure that our language was consistent and our language was easily readable, whether by artificial intelligence, by a scanner, by anybody who was looking at our school profile. Um, they would get the information that they need to get to understand who our student is.
So Christina, are you saying that we're being, we're wondering if AI is scanning information like this profile as well as the student's application and then looking for matchup?
Matching, right?
Producing some kind of summary report. We don't know that for sure, we have not ever gotten that directive from any university. But, you know, we know what AI can be doing and how fast this is moving, that I wouldn't be surprised if colleges are exploring this type of technology.
I should say that a school profile is meant to be a snapshot of Byram Hills High School, mostly for a, for an admissions counselor who doesn't know anything about Byram Hills. They might need to know, oh, I've, I've never heard of Byram Hills, I've never looked at an application before from Byram Hills, maybe I'm new to my job as an admissions counselor. What is their grading system? Do they have AP, do they have IB? Um, where would I be able to see this student on a GPA distribution chart? Um, that kind of information, how many APs does the school have? So it's meant to be a snapshot and not an exhaustive, like gloss, like, viewbook of Byram Hills. But it also is meant to direct them to places where they, if they wanted more of that information, they wanted to see, um, description about a particular course, that they have a link to our school, our course selection guide, and they could absolutely look, look for it there. So with that in mind, we enlisted, uh, ever talented Brian Melso, who was able to work with space and design and, I think, really, um, give it a facelift. I think it looks more pleasing, but also we were able to get, um, a few more things on here that we felt were important and that really, um, highlighted the accomplishments of our students on this, on this profile. So there are three areas I just wanted to point out, because those are new, those are not on the profile that we currently have. And this profile, although it has 2024 information, it would be updated to include, um, information for the class of 2025, which of course we wouldn't have for a few more months, so. Um, the first one is, uh, can't see that far, but I'm pretty sure. That's the AP honor roll. Um, so the AP honor roll is, um, a place where we felt that, in light of the fact that Byram Hills students must all take AP courses, and that is not the case at all high schools in, across the US, that we should highlight the fact that our students', um, AP scores fall into what is called, we were in the category of platinum, which is in the top 7% of, um, of the high schools that give APs. And really what that means is that our students are, um, scoring very high on these exams. They must take them, and this is something that a, a college should really understand about a Byram Hills student, that they're not just taking APs and then not taking the exam. They're taking the APs, they're doing really well on these APs, and it is a testament to the fact that they are being, they have great faculty, but they're also really working very hard, um, in these classes.
Sure, you have some schools that the kids take seven APs and they never take an AP exam.
They never take an AP exam, yeah, and so.
So this gives statistics on, um, the quantity of APs that our students take and the scores. So any, and, and there's minimum benchmarks to get to each level, there's four levels in the honor roll, we're at the top. So, you know, we have 89% of our students take at least one, 83% of students score 3%, uh, score three or higher, and 39% take five or more APs. And those are all way above what the minimum is to get to platinum. So our students are doing extraordinarily well. And that's nice to show what our community's like. And I think that'll lead into some further discussion Christina will have about some of the, the data on colleges in a moment.
Right, right. Uh, we felt it important to highlight our honor societies on here, and we had not previously had them on here. And we, we have more honor societies, I think, over the course of the last year or two, we added one or two more. And we really think it's important, um, for colleges and universities to know that we do have honor societies, so if they see that on a student's, um, application, um, that it's legitimate and it should absolutely be, um, a highlight for a particular student. And then on the second page, which would be at the back of the school, uh, the school profile.
We promised we're going to do something about the font size.
Yes.
Even my glasses are doing it. These are, these are things we know.
We know, yeah, this is definitely a draft.
Because no one can read it.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to work on that.
That's part of our feedback.
But it's phenomenal when you can read it.
Yeah, so we added our advanced coursework on here. We've always had our AP coursework on the profile, but we felt it was important for a college or university just to know very clearly which courses are considered advanced. So if they're looking at a transcript and they're looking at the profile, they could easily see a student who is in these courses is really taking our most advanced coursework at Byram Hills. And, um, that, adding that is, is new this year, and I think we want to, we might have a little bit more refinement of how that looks, but I think it's important for it to be on our school profile.
We're also moving toward, um, adding consistency in how we label the advanced courses. Some are called with an A at the end, and some have advance in front. We're already in that transition process. Uh, it's going to, going to be a phase in over time, so the transcript has to reflect the difference right now.
So instead of Bio-A, we would call that Advanced Bio, so that there's.
Or is it Advanced Bio? And that's also thinking of AI scanning this as well.
For the SATs and ACTs, does it, is it significant to show the percentage of students that actually take it? Because in some, I'm guessing our percentage is quite high. There might be some high schools where it's a much lower percentage of kids that actually sit for the test.
Right, I'm, I would imagine it's a very high number. We could.
I don't know, I don't know, it's up to you, but I, I just throw that out as an idea.
Yeah.
And just to at least think about, but it may not make sense. But, and then is it, are these averages or are they medians, or?
They're, uh, means, medians?
The mean.
Yeah, yeah, averages, it's average.
It's an average.
It's an, uh, it's an average and a mean.
Yeah.
It's the mean score.
I know you're, you said that you're renaming the honors and the advanced and things. They're not weighted, so does that hurt our students, you know, when they're applying to colleges? Because if they get a B or a B+, let's say in an AP class, should, wouldn't that be a, possibly an equivalent to an A in an un, in an unweighted class? And then when you're sending it out to colleges, there's no weight.
Right, so we, what we've heard from colleges is any way that we send our GPA to them, they are going to break it down.
Their way.
Their way.
Yeah.
And so this allows us to have it very clean, and where I think we could look to do a better job, and I think this is where, you know, this conversation comes in, is for a college to be able, if they need to apply a certain weight to a particular grade and a particular course, they know which ones are the advanced, and they know which ones they should be applying that weight to. So that's where I think, you know, we're getting that feedback, that that might be something to, to look at. And I also know that we have, um, hired some consultants who are going to look at this and make sure that every type of student at Byram Hills is represented on this profile and is highlighted for what they've accomplished. And so we want to just make sure that any changes we make along those lines, it's to benefit all students. And I think that this, um, these consultants who have worked at the college level in college admissions, so they're used to seeing profiles, can give us that feedback of, you know, maybe you don't need this, maybe you need to highlight this a little bit more. Why don't you do, why don't you rank, is that, is, or why don't you weight? Is that important for us to do? And they're going to help us kind of work through some of these questions that we continue to have.
Also, is there a way to put the AP scores on the transcripts? Because if somebody gets, let's say, a B+, because at Byram Hills, if you start with a B, then you get a B+, then you get an A, and then you get a B+ or, you know, but then you get a five on an AP. A five shows mastery, right? So I know this is a long, long discussion that they're having at the high school, but I think it might be beneficial for that type of student to have the AP scores, so that they're like, you know what? It could have been some subjective, you know, grades can be subjective. AP scores, they're national, everybody's taking the same exam.
Well, I think it, it's those students that we're advising to submit their AP scores to colleges. As if they're really high and they really signify that the student has put in a lot of hard work, then we're probably telling them to submit their AP scores as part of their application. But most of our students really don't, um, submit the AP scores until the end of their senior year.
I've never heard anyone, I, I've never been told to submit AP scores, which is interesting, because I always submit them at the end for college credit, but not.
You could submit them like, like SATs or, or ACTs, you could submit them if you wanted to. I don't think a lot of colleges pay attention to them.
Oh, to AP scores?
Yeah, at, at, during the, during the admissions process, certainly at the end of the year, students going to X college and they look at the AP scores, that's absolutely when they're going to be helpful. But most colleges admissions people will tell us that they don't need to see the AP scores, because they're only seeing the AP scores of the students that are doing really well.
Right, well, right, because you have the option of submitting it, right? Right, so they're going to, so, but if, but if you have a good AP score, then presumably you're going to want to.
There's no reason not to.
Right.
There's no reason not to.
Christina, I see the first line, uh, advanced courses are at level or higher than honors level's courses. Um, I know this.
It's going to say at the same level or a higher level than honors level.
My concern is, if we're looking at things through the lens of an AI filter, they're not, an AI filter's not reading that line. And is that going to create?
But an AI filter, let me interrupt you, it's probably not going to read this, it's going to read the transcript. And the transcript is also going to say that these are at the same level or higher than honors courses.
They're going to put this stuff through, through that filter as well.
Yeah, they're going to pick up the word honors.
I'm just concerned that, that an AI filter is not going to have the explanation. And are we hurting our students by calling them advanced instead of honors? Because it's not going to be picked up by that filter.
I thought advanced is above honors.
We're saying the same level or above.
But I'm, I'm saying, what does the college look at it? Do they like the advanced or the honors?
Whatever nomenclature you want to use.
I think he is wondering if, if they're looking for the word honors. Are they going to pick up the word honors? Are they going to scan this and see the word honors? Which we thought they would, because the word honors is here. So whether honors is in the sentence, it's here, or we offer honors courses, AI is going to pick up the word honors.
I'm just concerned because it's not in the course title, that they're not going to recog, that, that AI filter is not going to recognize that is an honors course.
So on the transcript though, we're going to have an asterisk next to each one that connects to this thing that it's at the same level or higher.
But AI filters are not reading asterisks.
But they are reading the word honors, which is on the transcript and on here, you know what I'm saying?
I do, but it's not in the course title, which I think is is where we're gonna perhaps lose them.
I think I think that's one of the questions that we have for our consultants is how, how, cause we're not the only high school that doesn't have honors. So how is this seen and how how should we be planning for this um, given AI? And given what they know about AI and how, you know, how it will be read.
It's interesting, some of the schools that the kids apply to, you you know, you have to do the um, you do input the
Yeah, for the student.
uh, coursework yourself, right?
SAR.
So I remember that you you do a dropdown, is this, and and it's always there those different titles, it's, is this an honors, advanced? And it's hard to know what to apply to some of these courses, like like look at like a a senior mentor, such in a competitive, right, uh, course to get into program.
Right.
And it it's zero credit, and what is it, like how do you, I mean, you could write about it that you were selected for that, but how do you show?
Right, how do you show it, right?
Yeah, that 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 was a, is it an honor, it's not an honor, but it's an honor to be, I mean, it's it's it, what are these times, so that was just interesting.
Right. Yeah, it's hard, and the the SAR is definitely.
The SAR, that's it, thanks.
SAR.
Yeah, yeah.
It's it's not a fun, if you've ever filled one out, it's very uh, it's very confusing.
Laborious.
Laborious, exactly, exactly.
I I I think the reality is that these, no matter what they're saying, because I think there was there was a little bit of backlash on the one or two schools that came out and said that they were using AI in the admissions process, so schools may have may are maybe are being a little quieter about it, but I think the reality is that these schools aren't, because of the Common App, they're getting hundreds of thousands of applications, they cannot possibly sit and read every one of them. They've got to be at least narrowing down that search.
Yep.
Through using, you know, a technology.
And as we have a better understanding of what they need to see, I think that can inform
Yeah.
what we do.
Yeah.
And I think that's what we're at.
And that's gonna change so quickly.
Quickly.
Right, it takes one person at one university to use one algorithm that is now going to and you know what, I'm not sure that universities are gonna be that rash, that they're going to say, we're gonna use this one algorithm, whatever it spits out, because you wanna know what it spits out, is the kind of student that you want as demonstrated by years of being in the university, right? So so I do think that it's it's here, but I think that it is a slower process, they're they're not gonna abandon their diligence of figuring out who these kids are, because they're gonna defer to an algorithm, because that might not be right, right?
And I think that's why, Jen, I think that's why we haven't heard from colleges definitively about what they're doing, because they don't know yet that they're scanning and this this AI usage is producing for them the intended outcome that they are hoping it will.
I mean, they've been using AI in in the job search.
Mm-hmm, for years.
Recruiting for many, many years, um, so it would be, I think, very naive for us to think that they're not using it. I'm glad to hear your.
The other question maybe for that, when you have a consultant coming in is is good old physics A, because I see that there's a footnote, and the footnote does differentiate it from ChemA and BioA, but it's a different level than ChemA and BioA, it's more equivalent to AP Bio, AP Chem. There's a subtlety there, but I think it's on people's, on students' minds as they apply, and it's important to just somehow highlight that course.
Yeah, yeah, agreed.
It's a lot of really good work.
It is, and it's been ongoing and and.
And it's going to continue.
It's gonna continue, but we have.
Hope is that there is something in place that is really vetted and.
And a lot of eyes, we, a lot of eyes that are independent of Byram Hills are are taking a look at it and giving us some very, um, I think sage advice about it, and uh, thank you, uh, you know, for allowing that process to happen, cause I think it's really gonna help our students.
You're thinking this will be finalized for next year's group of.
It will.
Yep.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going back to that old.
I know, I would encourage the board not to um, not to do a forensic on this, because
It's still.
there's still so many changes, right?
Yeah, sure.
That we've discussed that aren't in here and that our consultants were are going to give us that are going to go in here, so there will be ample time for you to take a look at what we think is our good go.
Yes.
This is just to give you a, just a little flavor, really darned.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you for all your work.
Thanks for the work on that.
Is there a way to hyperlink all the small, like instead of having a small print, because on the left, it's very clear. Is there what, cause this is probably being sent and attached on here.
Well, Lori, we also have to look at our language, like we still have things in here, if you look at interdisciplinary perspectives in literature, we still list the books they read, which I don't even think those books are accurate anymore. So there are parts of this that we know have to come out, so that's kind of our hope is that we get this down to what is actually necessary and then, you know, give us, yeah.
We're already revising that, so we're taking that back to the chairs to give us a little bit of a summary.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for all your work.
Just a few more things.
Yeah, so I know that the question is always, how are our students doing um, this year? This is very much a snapshot, and I only picked a few colleges and universities, just to give you a a sense of how our students are doing. We of course, um, uh, you know, our students are, have until May first to tell us where they're going, but we know that we've had a great year so far, um, twenty nine at Binghamton, crazy, always is is one of those schools that our students just absolutely love. Uh, I think the Cornell numbers are probably among the highest we've had, um.
These are just acceptances though, right, and these are not commits?
Uh, these are just acceptances, just acceptance, not matriculation, so just acceptance. Um, you know, things like, you know, Georgetown, Harvard, Princeton, uh, six at Emory, um, seven at Wisconsin, Richmond, great numbers at six, so um, again, this is not an exhaustive list, I just wanted to kind of give you a snapshot of of where we're at and um, you know, how our students are doing thus far, we're obviously working with students. I would imagine, um, and I'll get to it in a minute too, that colleges who struggle are definitely struggling with um, their yields, and they are more perplexed um, as ever, as to how to predict who is going to come to their school. And what that leads to is an increase in the waitlist, we have our students on a number of different waitlists. It used to be, you know, maybe a student would be on one waitlist and that was it, we have students on two, three, four waitlists. And as May first comes and students need to commit by May first, then the shuffle happens, and that's when we hear students getting off of the waitlist. And so things might change and our matriculation might actually change a little bit. Um, this I find very fascinating, and I would consider a trend at Byram Hills that is a positive trend. And what this is showing us is early decision, just a reminder to all, early decision is a binding agreement, a student may apply to one school and one school only. If they are accepted to that school, they must attend. So we had an increase from last year to this year, from thirty five to fifty three students who were accepted early decision. Um, and we had a total of seventy three last year, and we had a hundred and three total students apply this year. So what that basically is in percentages, in two thousand and twenty four, we had about a forty eight percent um, acceptance ED. And in two thousand and twenty five, we had about a fifty one percent um, acceptance for ED.
Forty eight percent of those who apply.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, not of those who got it, because fifty three students is twenty five percent, I mean, that's, that's a significant number.
It's a significant number, but I think what this is sort of highlighting is that students and families are understand, understanding that if early decision is something that you as a family can um, can do for financial reasons and that works for you, and you absolutely want to go to a particular school and you can identify that, this is a tool that has been ex- you know, extremely helpful for our students and um, I I think hopefully is a trend in the right direction.
Christina, can you get waitlisted during early decision?
You can, uh, it's more called deferred, so they get deferred to the regular dis- regular applicant pool. And what I don't have for you, it would be very hard to figure out, is of a student who was deferred from ED to regular, do they end up eventually getting in? Because sometimes they do, cause they have a leg up, cause they've already come, they've already said to that school, I want to be at that school above all others. And so typically in the regular applicant pool, if they're still a viable candidate, um, they usually get in regular decision.
Christina, for the one reason that you can pull out of the ED though, is for financial reasons. So people shouldn't be deterred from selecting an ED school, because you're not bound until you get your financial package, from what I understand.
Yeah, I, we do have a student or two, you you know, year to year, we don't like to go in, we like them to have all the information upfront, that this is a school that will work for them, you know, with estimated cost and everything else, so uh, we absolutely, that is a time when the ED does not have to be, you know, um, honored. But again, we don't like to break those contracts with colleges if we don't have to, because there are students in years to come who will be applying to that school, and we like them to go into it knowing all the information as much as possible.
Is this included on early action or is it just early decision?
This is just early decision.
So if you looked at it with early action, it's probably almost everybody in the class.
Oh, yeah, uh, early and early action.
Right.
Early action is like the Wild West, like if we have accurate numbers on that, like it's a good day, because that's, you know, there's so many a student might apply to one early decision school and four early action schools, and then get accepted to some, get uh, deferred in others, so.
Yeah, that explains why it's a hundred and three students.
Yes, right, so we probably had eighty five percent of the class that submitted either an ED or EA application.
Do you remember what the number of is of any of your parents of the senior class right now, is it?
Two hundred.
One ninety seven.
One ninety seven?
Yeah, that's right.
One eighty six.
One eighty six.
It says one eighty six on here.
One nine, one ninety six, one ninety.
No, that's last year's.
One ninety, it says one ninety seven. Oh, yeah, that was last year.
I think it's one eighty six.
No, this is, it's twenty twenty four. It's one ninety seven, we, they said it at the principal's coffee today too.
I can tell you what's.
I think it's one ninety seven.
And the last thing I just wanted to point out on this is that ED went down for us in two thousand and twenty five, but we had more students accepted ED one, so less students needed to use ED two, so, um, but we still obviously have students who apply ED two. The next, um, the next slide I think is really interesting, um, and that I believe is the, oh, okay, this I'll I'll break this down to you, this is the popular for Byram Hills schools. So where do students go and where are our students right now for for three years, what are the top popular colleges where our students actually attend? And what I think the trend here um, is showing is that the larger universities are where our students wanna go, a little bit more southern than than we're used to seeing, and very few small colleges and universities. So if I was a parent of a child in coming into high school, what I would take away from this is if you could get your child to look at small public or private schools, um, you probably have a better shot of having them, you know, be accepted, because those are the schools right now who are are concerned. Concerned about numbers, are concerned about money, and we have students just nationally, not just at Byram Hills, flocking to these larger um, universities. So the top ten data analysis, um, for reasons of confidentiality, and we never want to put anything out there that might single out particular students, and because this is only a two-year data range, we felt it would be important to discuss this information that you have in front of you, and because I I think it's an important it's important to highlight what this data is showing, and um, what I think it's showing is what I would call the Byram boost. And so when you look at this information, I think if you start in the center column, the nation nationwide admits uh, in top ten percent of the high school class, this information comes from the common data set. So what we did, and this is an internal document, we looked at these top schools, and we looked at what the college reports as the percentage of students that they admit, that it fall within the top ten percent of their class. And then what we did was we looked at Byram Hills admits for two years, and we figured out what percentage of them fell in the top ten percent of the class. And to highlight a few that I think really show what's what's going on here, the first college that's highlighted on your sheet has fifty two percent or reports that fifty two percent of the students that were admitted were in the top ten percent of the class, and none of our students were in the top ten percent of the class, and there were twenty students who were admitted. And what I think that really speaks to is this very advantageous situation that our students are in coming from Byram Hills, where the reputation of the school, of the academics, of their ability to be successful in college, their extracurriculars, they fit the profile of a student who can be accepted at these schools regardless of what percentage of the class they fall into. The second one down, you know, just to go through a few of them, uh, the second highlighted college, seventy three percent reportedly are in the top ten percent of the class, twenty two percent of our students were in the top ten percent of the class. I think the fourth one down is Ivy League, eighty two percent, as you would imagine, in the top ten percent of the class, yet only forty three percent of our admitted students are in the top ten percent of the class.
So said another way, if I'm that university, I see a Byram Hill student, even if they're not ranked in the top ten higher than the national average, so I can take those students.
Right.
That's sort of what.
It's kind of like.
The crazy thing too is we don't rank them.
We don't.
Right, so they're looking at our kid's profile, and they are saying, this profile without any ranking is how we are accepting this student, and where everywhere else is looking at eighty two percent of them are coming out of the top ten percent, they're looking at us without a ranking, and forty three percent are in the top ten percent.
Or it could be their own internal ranking, which they.
Right, their own internal.
Their own internal, right, could be that.
Based on our course profile and transcript of the kid.
With our old profile, our old profile, our old things.
Our old profile. And somehow our kid's editing.
Nothing has changed here, these aren't students who are benefited by all these changes that we're making, and we already know this about our students and how they are seen in in the college admissions process. So I think this is important, and obviously we're gonna continue to monitor this, and we'll continue to do this, and any changes we do make, we obviously would want to make sure that we're um, not doing anything to 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 disrupt this, because our students really do stand out in how they put together their applications, certainly their um, recommendations, their essays, and all of the extracurricular work outside of just the real rigor of their academic um, curriculum.
Yeah, so Christina, I think it also speaks to the work you do with your department to explore different type of information that they're gathering and just ask these types of questions and wondering, so it's that type of thinking in the department that's always making this a little better, cause Christina's, you know, encouraging her counselors to, let's ask some questions, let's.
Yeah, and this came without a request, which is what I really love, I love when I I get to see information like this and I'm not asking.
Right.
Somebody else is thinking.
Well, yeah, of course, we have a few counselors where this is, this is what they're doing, they're they're crunching these numbers, they're looking at it, they're looking at it by major, so that when parents come in and say, my child is an engineering major, has this GPA, what are their chances at these particular schools? We're really able to focus and provide this information, we're doing this work, we we might not always be able to put it out there because of the nature of um, not wanting students to be identified in some way, but in hopefully, if you've had individual meetings with our counselors, they're pulling up some of this data and they're talking to you about it in very real data, it's not just conjecture, it's not just kind of, you know, fluff.
And in Navi, you can get a sense of one school, but when you look at it this way, it's interesting, because one would hope that if you're in a school where average SAT score, average AP score is is in that higher echelon, that it should turn out this way, but you never know until you look at the data, right?
You never know, right?
So it's, I think it's really useful to do this analysis.
Right, to do this, and we'll continue to do this analysis for sure.
So other things you're working on?
So, and this is our last slide, but you know, I just think it's always important to say, you know, where are we right now and where where do we hope to be going in the future? We will continue to host college visits, this has become even more important to us, because if you've ever tried to get a college admissions rep on the phone, it is hard to do, and if we have over a hundred people, and those are typically the people who are reading the um, the applications of our students, and a counselor is sitting in on every one of those and usually having a nice conversation where we can inform them, they can inform us, and that's where we're really building a lot of great relationships with our admissions. Where we can inform them, they can inform us and that's where we're really building a lot of great relationships with our admissions reps. This year alone, we were visiting approximately thirty colleges who are physically on campuses of about thirty colleges. This year, going to information sessions, answering questions or asking questions that uh, we want to know. We could probably add about five more, cause Chris Walsh is doing his own as he's taking his children. So he is acting um, as a, as a counselor for us, so we actually have a few more, which is absolutely great. We do advocacy calls and we do them for students um, when it's needed. And we absolutely can get somebody on the phone and talk to them if we need to, emails of course. And then a lot of webinars, some of the information um, that I have about just like trends in college admission. We had one of the counselors sat on one um, this past Monday and learned information that is reported by the National Association of. Of College and Admissions Counselors, which is really the governing body for our work. And it's, um, they've collected a lot of data, we're learning a lot about this admission cycle already. So that's happening. Um, going forward, we really want to continue to work with outside consultants. We understand that our effectiveness comes from a better understanding. Of how college admissions works. And these are people who have been on that side and they help us see what the priorities of an institution are. And how to work within those priorities. And what we've learned from that is that we know that students need to showcase their intellectual vitality, their intellectual curiosity. Beyond their academics and they do that by research, they do that by developing apps, they. Uh, they do that in a host of different ways and we know that that is as important as them being a very strong academic candidate. So we're working with students as early as ninth grade to talk about ways that we can build, build that up in our students. And lastly, I think what we know, what we're learning is it is very important for students to be able to connect. Their college major, major at each particular school with the coursework that they're in at Byram Hills. Along with their intellectual vitality and you're making this very crystal clear for overworked admissions counselors. Who really just want to see it all lined up and then you've picked a major that is right on, it fits. And you have a very well-developed reason for picking that particular major and it's backed up and supported by all of these things.
Do you think it's, it hurts kids to put undecided?
Yes, hundred percent. We have, we will, if that comes up, we would work with a student to say, we can find something for you. And one of, one of the things that we might want to do is we have, we have ways of finding out. What are the under-populated majors at particular colleges and universities? And I know parents and students don't want to hear, I don't want to go as a sociology major, I don't want to be a sociology major. But we say, do you want to go to that school? Cause if you do and that's your best shot of getting in, you can get in as a sociology major and then you can switch to most careers. Not computer science, not engineering, not nursing, but from, I, I think we have to be very strategic about the major that students are picking. Um, at each particular school and I think that that is something that we're learning a lot more about and will continue to learn.
That's of course also assuming that that student has coursework or other interests that support that.
Exactly.
Cause I assume applying as a sociology major, if you're taking math classes is not really going to do much.
Right, exactly, exactly. Everything has to come together in an alignment to support that particular major.
So the popular majors currently, the engineering.
Business, computer science.
Information sciences now.
Make it more challenging then, because more people are trying to get into this.
Super, super competitive, super small programs at colleges and.
You can narrow it.
They won't let you go into it after freshman.
Right, you can't get in there if you don't apply directly to it.
But also making it more like narrow, you may have an interest in say, engineering, but it's coupled with something else.
Right.
And you can bring that together somehow in a creative way, that may stand out to you.
That stands out, exactly, exactly.
Anything else for Christina? This is really informative.
Christina, that's great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you and thank you for your support and we will continue to, to do this work and hopefully um. Just continue to support families as college admissions continues to change and, and it does from year to year, so we're happy to stay on top of it.
I also really appreciate your approach to it all. I mean, you are intact season.
Yeah.
And yet you are spending and, and a lot of time dedicated to. And so are your guidance counselors, really looking at, how do we look at the model that we're using? And without holding to a conviction about anything, right? Just really, you know, I'm, I'm really impressed with it, like just to open the mind and say like, what is it out there? And what is really the best for these kids? And so many times in life, people just stick to their convictions when they don't even believe what their convictions are anymore.
Right, right.
Right?
We have.
And that stubbornness doesn't help kids and you know that, right?
Great team, great counselors, very open-minded and really working on behalf of the students is really what they're all about. And I hope you have had that experience with, with our department.
And during tax season.
During tax.
Thank you Christina.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you for being here.
You want to keep that or they can keep that or?
Yes.
All right, Christina, go home.
Okay, I hope you can go home soon too. Take care, have a great night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so moving on um, to the next item. Can I have a motion to adopt the Southern Westchester BOSI's administrative budget and election of trustees for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Oh, can we just get the quick uh?
The quick and dirty is a one point five eight percent budget to budget increase. Which is lower than BOSI's has been for quite a while, but also remember that they still have a lag of a bunch of people. Who are on health insurance under an old bad plan.
Right.
That is very costly to them and they're still at one point five eight percent.
Yep, okay, got it.
Do we need to do the vote again?
Yeah.
Yeah, do it again.
Do it again.
You could, you don't need to ask for a merger, but ask for the vote again.
Okay, so all those in favor of the Southern Westchester BOSI's administrative budget and?
And the elections.
And the, and the election of the trustees for the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth school year, all those in favor? All right, so we're going to turn it over to Jen for the superintendent's report.
This will be quick.
Maybe because my clicker's not working.
Sure, quick but fantastic. National Art Honor Society induction ceremony, we had ten students this year inducted. Uh, the ceremony included presentations from our student leaders, recognition of our new and current student inductees. So congratulations to Lily, Ariana, Zoe, Ava, Lila, uh, Daniela, Shannon. Lucy, uh, I'm sorry, Lucia, Mason and Isabella. And um, I just want to go back to the AP art show.
Holy wow.
Yeah, it was great.
It was fantastic.
I mean, really, you could be in a, a fine art school, right? And um, the next one, which will be. Oh, you did, I did go in. Um, so we also have students who were accepted into our junior leadership, um, Charlie and Lily. This is the president's junior leadership council at Northern Westchester Hospital. Um, this is where our kids are going to re-join their returning members. Uh, but this year, I, I am so upset tomorrow night, I cannot go and tomorrow night I have a B H E F meeting. But the students on the junior president's council this year wrote a book for use at elementary schools. And it's all about like how you're supposed to be reaching out to people and seeking supports that you need, right? So just, they're so proud of that work, um, and I wish I could be there, but the work that our students are doing on this junior president's council. Is real work and um, I'm just proud of our kids for that. We had our students shine at Disney World, I mean, I can't believe it, the last time we tried to go to Disney World, COVID happened. I don't know if you remember that, but we were like trying to reimburse train tickets and plane tickets for like a short century.
Is this the first time since COVID?
Yes, yes, so we had sixty-eight students there, um, they attended Disney's Imagination Campus. With their ensemble, concert choir, string orchestra, symphonic winds, they performed in Disney Springs, they attended a workshop. Uh, for professional development, um, they had a blast, a good time, have a y'all, that's great. And you're invited this Thursday night, we have um, our concert choir, we, we have all of our music ensembles. Meeting Thursday night at seven o'clock and prior to that, we are going to host a walkthrough of the learning commons. I and maybe only I will be able to pick out along with Kelly, the three things that aren't done yet. But that's okay, because it is beautiful, it's a wonderful space, kids are using it and loving it and it's full and.
It's amazing.
They're really appreciative. I have to just say to this community, you have raised, you must have all done some sort of home renovation. That your kids have been really grateful for when it was finished, because they exhibited the same behavior here. They never complained during the whole time they were locked out that this was happening and when they were let in, they were nothing but joyful about it. And appreciative, really, really appreciative.
We've had kids come up unsolicited and say, this is beautiful. And they use that language, it's beautiful.
Like I said, it was nicer than our college.
And go Bobcats.
Thank you, Antonio.
Hi, just a brief one to give an update, um, for those of you who have students in the middle school or at Wampus. Know that there was a bit of an issue with the state testing on April eighth and ninth. First and foremost, we were relieved that it was not a Byram Hills problem, of course, that's the first thing we check when kids are having trouble logging in. The problem was with logging in. And so on that first day, it was slow, the middle school kids sort of got in at first, but then it's, they stopped being able to get in. We pulled the plug at Wampus because after an hour, it was just not happening and we started to hear other districts. So I go on my listservs, Kevin goes on his listservs and we start hearing from other people that know this is happening in other districts. And it takes about an hour, hour and a half till we really get a real response um, from the vendor of how they're addressing it. They acknowledge, yes, this is a problem, we're working on it. So at that point, we have to make a decision, because we have kids sitting there waiting for an hour to take a test. So on the eighth, we decided to postpone, we went in on the ninth, the middle school got in, once you got in, it was okay to test. Then it started to slow down for Wampus, so we just had to pull the plug on Wampus, Wampus is starting tomorrow. Um, this week has been okay, I have not heard any problems, um, New York City started testing today, so that was. Why we pushed it to Wednesday and Thursday, because I knew New York City was starting on Tuesday and didn't want to do it at the same time. So things seem to work smoothly now. There was a call with State Ed after that second day. This Office of State Assessment had their assistant commissioner on. He was very apologetic, it was a good response, the strongest response I've ever heard from the state when he said that there will be contractual implications. Due to this problem, he was very upset because after the first day, he wrote to the community, you know, to everybody saying, this problem was resolved. Cause the vendor assured him it was resolved and then it wasn't, so he was very upset about that. Basically, the problem, the way they described it was like, you have a door that's so big and students start coming in. So the first few groups could get in, but then the buildup started to happen and then it was like a big crowd trying to get through this door, that was this size. The door needed to be bigger.
Which is honestly ridiculous, because they knew exactly how many kids were going to go in.
Exactly, and they do simulations and what they, what they, what vendor explained was that it got. The setting got reset from the simulation to the actual time of the test. They thought they resolved it, but then it was even more technical on the second day, so.
Huge concern, because all the APs for the first time are online this year.
Yeah, yeah, so I think the college board is hopefully going to be prepared for this as well.
Hopefully, isn't like, hopeful is not really.
College board.
And it's not as many kids, I think, right?
I think that's right. Yeah, so.
For EJP because they're spread out a little.
But why isn't there backup like paper exam? Yeah, I, I just don't understand, why isn't there a backup in this day and age?
They just don't provide that, the ideas to get away from the paper, I suppose, but yeah, we're not able to do both. We can't say we're doing it online and order.
Oh, we opted, we opted for online?
Well, all of New York State for the state tests have to be administered online.
But for AP, we opted for that?
No, AP is all, that's required by the college board to do digital, so that's digital.
The first year it's all digital?
I believe so. I believe this is the first year.
Yeah. Last year we couldn't go on. But last year was fine, last year we, we were digital too and.
No, they're saying this is the first year it's all digital.
Last year was optional and we opted to do it.
Right, optional means that half the schools took it down.
Right, but it.
But hopefully they'll.
Well, that's something worked out the kinks last year and this year it'll go smoothly.
Yeah, it is a concern from the state with the state tests anyway and we were on this call, we'll see how, you know, what happens after this. The state has addressed it by extending the window and doing some things like that. There are two issues that I raised that weren't addressed, but I'm going to follow up with the assistant commissioner. One is just, how will you really evaluate the reliability of the data? Because you have students who were sort of sitting and waiting to take it and then they got in and what does that do to students? And how are they going to take the students who tested on these days versus students who didn't, can they do some type of norming to quote that? That's one. The other two, he referred to on the webinar that they were monitoring this and noticed a slowdown right away. Why does it take an hour and a half for districts to know that there's a slowdown? So could they make the dashboard live to us? So we could see that and make a decision within a few minutes instead of having our poor kids sit there.
And wasting an hour thinking that it was a Byram Hills session.
Exactly, and then all the running around that happens and then kids waiting and teachers calling down to the office and it's this nonsense for an hour to an hour. Now, does this mean that we're going to get results much sooner?
No.
Because one would think. Right. All districts starting next year have to be computer-based, so maybe next year we will see that. So we'll see, they still do their norming and they have this process, it's a very bureaucratic process that the state goes through. With different organ, there's a, di- different groups, different um, organizations within State Ed have to touch this data. In multiple ways in sequence, so there is a process to go through, hopefully that can happen faster and that's the idea with digital, making this all online. One would think it should happen literally in days. It should, but yeah, it doesn't. We'll see, hopefully next year, when it's all digital, we can get the results quicker, so. Just wanted to give an update to our community, um, the state's working on it, I'm going to continue to follow up with State Ed about some of these issues.
Appreciate that, great, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Are there any reports from the board?
Just very quickly from the PTSA meeting, I think we mentioned it earlier, but they're willing to provide the babysitting and dog sitting. For the um, upcoming uh, election and so, I mean, vote and budget vote and election.
Next, May twentieth.
I might bring my dog because he loves company.
The other dogs peering out the window.
It's such a great service, you literally just drive up and jump out of your car, leave it running.
It's fantastic, yeah, it's very, very nice of them.
Yes, and send it running.
We appreciate the PTSA from that. Anything else, any other board reports? No, okay. Next item, any communications to the board? Okay, so uh, next we'll do an approval of the minutes from the April eighth meeting, can I have a motion to approve those minutes? Yes, and did anybody else miss it too? No, someone else missed it also?
No.
Was it just, okay.
So moved.
All in favor? Great, um, and now, sorry, you want to abstain, right? Yep, okay, and um, now we are going to, I'm going to get a motion to enter into executive session.
I think you have to say.
Did you need something else?
There were communications.
There were communications.
There were communications to the board.
But they, there were communications to the superintendent and to the board about.
Ah, yes.
Absolutely right.
It was to the board and to the superintendent and it was regarding athletics and I responded on behalf of the district to all of those parents. Uh, most of them by phone call and a couple of them by email, when it warranted an email back.
Okay.
I apologize, we were all like.
Yes, anything else, any other communications to the board that we might have missed?
No, no, no.
Okay, so we're going to, the board is going to enter into executive session to discuss two point one negotiations matter, BHTA. Two point two personnel matter, probationary teachers, two point three contract matter, individual employee. And we have three additions to that executive session. To add as well, two point four contract matter, individual employee, two point five legal matter, individual student. And two point six legal matter, individual student, so can I please have a motion?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
And we're going into executive session at eight fifty-four.
Yes, we are, thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.